This is more relaxed. It's probably fine if we start with the brighter lights, but you know, we can't.
There'll be lots of people saying that they got behind it by me. But funny, uh, yeah. Dan's getting pretty thin on top of you, you know? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand twenty-four. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve council agenda. Any addenda, additions or corrections?
I'm Mayor Council. I don't have any additions or corrections for you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve the agenda presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay. Motion carries. Implication. Uh, Hunter Ridge Community Church. We'll just have a moment of silence, please. Next is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything to make? We do have a proclamation underneath there. Whereas the city of Hutchinson believes connecting citizens as individual in a common purpose is a powerful means of building a stronger community. Whereas the city of Hutchinson believes strong communities create a stable and supportive society. Whereas the city of Hutchinson believes citizens of all age who feel a sense of belonging tend to indeed a happier and healthier life. Whereas the city of Hutchinson recognizes that one book, one community, both of Matt Goldman, Carolina Moonset expands a sense of community through a wide range discussion. Now therefore, I guarantee for Seer, Mayor of Hutchinson, Minnesota, do proclaim the month of January two thousand twenty-four as one book, one community month. Mary. I guess you said you would like to say a few words.
Thanks. I want to say thank you for doing this. This is the eleventh year we've been doing this. And Gary has, there's been a proclamation every year. We look for, you know, any way we can get the word out. I'm here in kind of two roles, one with the one book, one community, but also I'm part of the Hutchinson Connects Committee. But Doug is going to be talking about that later, so I'm going to just let like the goals of that committee up to Doug. So I'm here on behalf, as said, of this one book, one community program. And with the holidays past and the winter months ahead, we found that this has been a real sweet spot for this success of the program. I think if we tried to do it during the summer with people busy, but you know, Christmas is over, all those activities and we were looking just at brown and cold. Well, at least we have white and cold. So, but it still keeps us inside. And so we found that over the years, this time has worked for friends, families, book clubs and coworkers to read the same book. And it's a book that a committee, the one book, one community chooses each year. And we try and get a range of things from nonfiction like Canoeing with a Cree about a canoe trip, you know, taken to the Hudson River Valley to one year we had, if you lived here, you'd be home by now. Kind of a funnier thing, novels, different things. And so this year we have a novel. But one thing that all these books have in common is that there's a Minnesota connection. Either the book is about a Minnesota topic like the Hinckley Fires. One year we had a book on the history of the Hinckley Fires in the eighteen ninety-eight. I should remember the date, but a long time ago. And or they've been written by a Minnesota author. So what that makes us eligible for is qualifying for legacy grants. I think you think of legacy grants for air, water quality, outdoors things. But there's also a part of that, that funding that gets sent for cultural heritage. And so if you have something that's connected with Minnesota, you can tap into those funds. So it's a nice way of bringing some of those funds out to Hutchinson. The book we're reading this year, it's Carolina Moonset by Matt Goldman. Now Carolina doesn't sound too Minnesotan, does it? But it, the connection is that it was written by a popular Minnesota author who's a New York Times bestselling author and Emmy award winning television writer. He wrote programs for the Seinfield. And so one good thing about Matt is that he's been kind of vetted as a really good speaker. And he's also available and will be coming out on April twentieth for a meet the author event. And people have always enjoyed it when we can get the authors out. Just a lot, they always have questions about where'd you get the idea, you know, how do you write your books? And just questions about the book itself. And so we'll have that to conclude the program and then we have a community book discussion on March tenth. Now I just have to give you a little quick teaser about the book, okay? The publisher describes Carolina Moonset as a mystery novel. Joey Green, the main character, returns home to South Carolina to take care of his ailing father who's suffering from dementia. He grows increasingly anxious as his father's hallucinations about figures from his youth begin to hunt him at long buried secrets, scandals and suspicions. Both suspenseful and deeply moving. The book is an engrossing novel about family memories, both golden and terrible, and secrets too dangerous to stay hidden forever. So now doesn't that just sound like something you better go out and read? So if you want to find out about secrets that are too dangerous to stay hidden, read Carolina Moonset. I'm going to leave a copy of this with Melissa for the staff or you can just pass it around any way you want. The book is available by checking copies out at the library. The library also has something called a book club kit and what it is, is twelve books put in a tote. And this community has more book clubs, six, seven, eight at least, you know? And there's a lot of others that are just kind of informal friends getting together. So they always love these. You can also get the book by purchasing it at the Center for the Arts or it's very available online or any bookstore. And just a shout out to some of our other funding sponsors are the Friends of the Library. And we also get money from Thriving Grants and partnering with Hutchinson Public Library, Hutchinson Health and the leader. So any questions about this or it gets to be funny because around November, people are starting to ask us like, what's the book going to be this year? It gets to be this big secret. And so we've been sworn to silence, you know, because so we keep it a secret, announce it right before Thanksgiving because we've had families requesting. They get the book for Melissa's family, in fact. That's a Christmas gift, one of the Christmas gifts from their mom, who is a former librarian. And, you know, so that they could get it as a gift to give at Christmas time. And so, so it's a big secret and the secret's out and then nobody's bugging us about what we're choosing this year. So, so anyway, here's the copy of the book. And you can also find more information on Facebook, One Book, One Community, Hutchinson, or call the library.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That will come up in the public comment session.
All right.
Questions, are there?
Thanks, Mary. We do have a resolution underneath there. Resolution one, five, six, eight, four. Resolution accepting two thousand dollar donation from the village ranch to the Hutchinson Police Department towards future equipment purchases.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to accept that donation. Any other discussion?
Aye.
We'll say nay. Motion carries. Public comment. Anybody wants to address the council? Just please come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, of course here and council members. I'm Doug Hanneman. My address is one, seven, one, six, five, two hundred thirty-six circle. I'm here representing Hutchinson Connects. We're a grassroots citizens group that promotes friendship, companionship, socialization and overall well-being in the community. We do this through numerous community activities. For example, we partner with the Hutchinson Police Department every year in promoting National Night Out. That's held on the first Tuesday of August. And it's our job to get the word out about the more than two dozen parties that take place that evening. We also promote those little free libraries like Chad has one in his yard. You see them all over town and those little libraries encourage people to read and then discuss books. And so that's what we're all about is connecting. We also partner with Friends of the Library, with the one book, one community that Mary just talked about. We write periodic stories for the Hutchinson Leader about the importance of friendships and connecting with others. We participate at community events such as Volunteer Hutchinson, which just took place at Arts Place a few weeks ago. And at Ridgewater College, they have a welcome day and health fair. We promote ways that we, that residents can become more engaged in the community. We also host an award called Kind Neighbor Spotlight and that recognizes unsung Hutchinson volunteers who do good things, good deeds for the neighbors like home repairs and shoveling sidewalks and raking leaves, that sort of thing. And finally, it's important to note that Hutchinson Connects is strongly supported by Hutchinson Health because the hospital and the clinic recognize that a community that values friendships and socialization is a healthy community. We've been around for thirteen years. We're a group of about eight or nine people. We're looking for more local citizens to join us. We gather at the library every third Monday of the month to plan our activities. And we like to think of our group as a friend to many, our foes, our isolation and loneliness. We like to drive isolation and loneliness out of town. Sadly, the loneliness epidemic is everywhere from small towns to big cities and it has been growing in recent decades, as many of you know. Some folks have theories about why loneliness and socialization or isolation has have become so common. Some blame social media, but we know the problem goes deeper than that. Some blame the breakdown of the family, but this can be a little bit misleading because marriages are actually lasting longer now than they have been the last fifteen years. Some blame distrust and disinterest in institutions such as governments, schools, the media, law enforcement, the financial sector, even religion. Churches in town will tell you that attendance has been down, especially during, since the pandemic. Whatever the reason, the reality is that people are not interacting with each other the way that you used to. And more people than are, than ever are saying that they have no close friends, nobody to talk to when times are good or bad. And all this loneliness is having a harmful impact on society. Volunteerism has dropped, civic engagement is waning. People simply don't know, don't show up for events the way they used to. But the places where more people are showing up are mental health clinics, which have waiting lists, you know, folks wanting to see professionals. And that's our new reality. Researchers say that loneliness and isolation, social isolation can be as damaging to physical health as smoking fifteen cigarettes a day. And of course, social relationships are also associated with increases in heart disease and the risk of stroke. And the suicide rate is higher than ever in our country, especially among older white rural men. But there is hope. And Mary, you know, says that the people living near her home on the south side of town, they go out of their way to welcome new neighbors. And if you talk with Mary Hodgson over at the Chamber of Commerce, she'll tell you that their neighborhood has a standing night during the summer to get together. So there are bright spots and we need more bright spots. And this is where Hutchinson Connects comes in. We're here to help Hutchinson area residents build friendships. So the next time you hear someone talk about feeling lonely or isolated, please let them know about our group. We'd love to tell them where they could volunteer or join a civic group or become involved in some other community activity. Encourage them to go to our Facebook page or have them email us at hutchisonconnects@gmail.com. We believe that neighborhood, neighborliness and friendship are contagious. And both of those things are really good for the soul as well as our physical well-being. Thank you. Do you have any questions at all that I can answer? Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks Doug.
Good work, Doug.
Thanks Doug for taking time out of your life to do that for people, so.
Matt, is there someplace on the city website that they could have this information?
Well, I would just say contact us. We get so many requests for third party links that we just don't put them on there. But, you know, I think it's important for us, as you guys know, as council members, that's why when Doug talked to me, he said, come dress them at the public, you know? So when things pop up, you guys hear things from time to time that they can, at the very least, maybe in the back head that, hey, you know what, there's this group in town. Why don't you look at connecting with them, so.
All right. Thanks Doug. We have the regular meeting minutes of December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve them?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. We'll say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda. This will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. We have A is resolution number one, five, six, eight, one. Appointing Matthew Yannick as city administrator for two thousand twenty-four. B is resolution number one, five, six, eight, two. Designating official newspaper as the Hutchinson Leader. C is resolution number one, five, six, eight, three. Designating depositories of the city funds in a commercial bank and institution. D is selection of council vice president, that'd be Chad Shumowski. E is designation of council representatives of boards and commissions. So our airport commission will be Gary Horsey. Hutchinson Economic Development Authority, EDA, is Chad Shumowski and Pat May. Hutchinson Housing Redevelopment Authority, the HRA, is Gary Horsey. Library Board would be Tim Burley. Parks, Recreation and Community Education Advisory Board, Chad Shumowski. Planning Commission would be Dave Sebastian. Public Arts Commission would be Tim Burley. The Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee is Pat May. Sustainability Board would be Pat May. Mid-Minnesota Commission is Dave Sebastian. Joint Planning Board would be Dave Sebastian. Hutchinson Downtown Association would be Gary Horsey. Hutchinson Fire Relief Association would be chief, fire chief, Mike Schuman. Administrator, Matt Yannick and Mayor Gary Horsey. Resource Allocation Committee would be Gary Horsey and Chad Shumowski. Wage Committee would be Pat May and Dave Sebastian. Union Negotiation Committee is Gary Horsey and Tim Burley. Marketing and Boards and Branding Committee is Tim Burley and Pat May. So then designation of council representatives to other temporary commission or committees would be Lakes, River Basin Study Technical Advisory Panel. That's TAP would be Gary Horsey and Chad Shumowski. H is consideration for approval of the two thousand twenty-four city calendar. I is consideration for approval issuing short-term gambling license to the McLeod County Pheasants Forever on March ninth, two thousand twenty-four at McLeod County Fairgrounds. J is consideration for approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Hutchinson Rotary Foundation on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four at Arts Place. K is consideration for approving a issuing, approval of issuing taxi license to Matt Reed of Quality Transportation. L is consideration for approval of issuing. I'm sorry, I almost missed one there, man. K is approval of issuing taxi license, Matt Reed for Quality Transportation. L is consideration for approval of purchasing Birch Arena East Ring Dashar Board's replacement from Hall American Arena product. And M is affirmative board appointments and reappointments. Appointment of Chad Seinhouse to the senior advisory boards to January of two thousand twenty-seven. Appointment of Jody Sappel to the senior advisory board to January of two thousand twenty-seven. Reappointment of Mike McGraw to the EDA Board of two thousand twenty-nine. And in his claims appropriation contract payments, register A. And is there anything that anybody wants pulled off? I would like to pull off the E for representative on boards and commissions. Let me just clarify, clarification, is that E, F and G?
Yes, E.
I'm sorry, yes. E, E, F and G. Yeah, for all of them.
I would make a motion to accept the rest of it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the balance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay. Motion carries. I just wanted to pull that off because is there any, anybody that wants to move around on the committees?
I was, I was looking at this after the fact. We've got a couple flip flop, don't we?
Yeah, I think what happened, if I look at that, Matt, that was the way it was presented last year. And Tim and I switched, I went to public, I stayed on Public Arts, Tim, you went to Sustainability.
Yes, that's right.
And so those two need to be flip flopped. So Tim to Sustainability, myself to Public Arts. And I think that was it.
And then Gary, you and I talked about the wage committee, if I could be on there.
Yeah. Could we put Chad, Chad on, on the wage committee, replacing Dave Sebastian? Chad was missing, he, he had some free time, so I was going to move, move him around a little.
I love meetings, so.
So, yeah, so we'll, we'll move Chad around. Is there any other one that anybody else wants to be particularly interested in serving on? We'll take some of the load off. Dave, I, Dave, you had a few more than anybody else, so.
Motion to approve is revamped.
I would second that.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve. The.
It'd be E, F and G.
Board appointments, commissions. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay. Motion carries. Okay, moving on, we have claims on appropriation, contract payments, register B. I do have a check on there for my business, so I'll be abstaining.
And make a motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve register B with me abstaining. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay. That was kind of sketchy there for a second here.
Here you are, we're in the end here.
All right, ready, moving on. We do not have a public hearing tonight. So let's move down to communications requests and petitions. We have the Liquor Hutch year-end report. Good evening, Candace.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Candace Woods from Liquor Hutch to give you a quick overview of two thousand twenty-three at Liquor Hutch. Start with our sales history. This slide shows you our sales in the last eighteen years, going back to two thousand and six when the store was expanded and remodeled. I guess the main thing to notice there is twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we had a spike in sales. But we are now kind of on the usual curve. The sales for two thousand and twenty-three on this slide, you can see we're at seven point five million dollars approximately, which was a two point nine percent increase over two thousand twenty-two. Liquor sales were up five point three percent. Beer sales were basically flat. Wine sales did increase by about one point six percent. And I did add the THC category, a new category for us this year. We sold thirty-three thousand and eighty-two dollars worth of THC in those six months that it was legal for us to sell them. Our customer counts only increased slightly. Our average sale per customer is up about two point eight percent. Some things to note. In two thousand and twenty-three, our sales were three point one percent more than we had budgeted. So we exceeded our budget. Our gross profits were managed to be three point five percent increased over budget. Our expenses to date, all, I should mention, all of these numbers are unaudited as we're only a couple of weeks into January and the city has not been through the audit process. So these numbers are the numbers from our store accounting system. Our expenses are running as budgeted, so we don't expect any different increases there as we get through the audit. So our net profit will be approximately six hundred thousand dollars. I think it's important to note that that's the actual money that the Liquor Hutch does produce, six hundred thousand. And it'll probably be a bit more than that, but we will have at least six hundred thousand dollars in net profit. And that's before transfer to the city. So five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that money will come back to the city. The remainder of that money stays in the liquor fund and those are the monies that we use for improvements or necessary maintenance at the store. Another thing to note, we were actually up over four percent going into December. But our holiday sales were a bit soft with an increase of only three hundred and eighty-eight dollars over two thousand twenty-two. As I talk to people around the state, that's pretty much what everybody's saying. It was just a soft holiday. Maybe because, sometimes it's just simply because of the way the holiday falls. When it falls Sunday to Monday, that can have a big effect. Where last year it was Saturday to Sunday.
So I just want to pause. I think it's important to note because Candace, you shared with me, you know, we still hear comments in the public that our liquor store is not making money. And I think it was important to highlight that it made six hundred thousand dollars last year. So I'm not sure where those rumors come from. I think some of it may have to do, as we've talked about at the truth of taxation, when you factor in depreciation, which isn't an actual number. But we are doing extremely well at the liquor store, so.
Sure, yeah.
Reiterate that again for the public.
I think as I travel, I've been in this business. I think as I travel, I've been in this business for thirty-five plus years and sales this year, if you take all the price increases, it's it's been flat, I mean, pretty much the whole year, and that's I cover a big territory, so I mean, it's not unusual here, it's just that COVID just messed things up so much, and it's now, like you said, it's back to reality. It'll be interesting to see in the future where the THC stuff goes because six months, you say, but actually in reality, it probably caught on maybe four months of.
That's true, yeah. It was a slower start, certainly. And I think for the public, it's difficult to understand the budgeting process. So when we present those that budget information, it sometimes appears to them as though we're not making money. So yes, it's very important to understand that we will clear, and that's the liquor store covering all of our own expenses. We will clear that six hundred thousand dollars. And five fifty will come back to the city, which is what this chart shows you. So in those years since two thousand and six, when we remodeled, the liquor store has contributed back to the city over eight million dollars. Some things, some trends that are going on in the liquor industry and at the store. Sales continue to increase in the liquor category, beer sales continue to be flat. Both of these things in the store are following national trends, so they're of no surprise, really. Low alcohol beverage volume and non-alcohol beer, wine, and liquor products continue to show sales increases, so that's a great trend. We're still experiencing a lot of supply round of stocks, price increases are crazy, discontinued items, and labor shortages that our distributors continue to affect our daily operations. Like our deliveries aren't on time and they're messed up, honestly, because their warehouses are experiencing labor issues. Facebook, Instagram, direct email, those remain some of our most effective advertising tools. In two thousand and twenty-three, we put in a new online ordering system that has an improved presence, and we will be launching an app for that system in two thousand and twenty-four. So everybody should check it out at Liquorhutch.com. And THC sales are increasing as our customer base gains knowledge and discovers our selection. So that's what we just spoke to, that started out a little slow, but we're seeing increasing sales all the time. Some of our successful ongoing promotions, our loyalty program continues to be an overwhelming success. We offer the discount on Thursdays for craft and imported beer, also a big success. Our online purchasing, those numbers continue to increase as people take advantage of that convenience. Holiday sales, newspaper advertising, and things that we focused on in so social media. And we do a lot of multiple buy pricing in the store. One of our most successful promotions is a rack where we have lines where you can buy three for thirteen dollars and then only fifteen dollars a piece, so it's a significant savings. And it's also because of the way we work it, it's a very profitable promotion for us. In two thousand and twenty-four, we're looking at some facility improvements. So when I mentioned that we may we'll make about six hundred thousand dollars this year, five hundred and fifty of that goes back to the city. And the remainder of our net profit then falls into the liquor fund. So those dollars that are in the liquor fund are what we use for maintenance and improvements in the store, so that's where those dollars will come from. So these will be completely profits produced by the liquor store that will be reinvested into the liquor store. So we will be updating our cash wraps, that's where our cash registers are. They're from two thousand and six at this point, and they need some updating and improvement. We're always updating light lighting throughout the store for, you know, savings and sustainability, so we're constantly on a rotation to do that. Our parking lot needs some landscaping things done, and as part of our regular maintenance schedule, we'll be updating the refrigeration in our important craft cooler. That's kind of a major expense, it runs about twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars for that refrigeration system. Some of our challenges for two thousand and twenty-four. Budget management is always the biggest challenge. So managing our labor to sales to stay at that eleventh percent is a challenge. We added additional benefits this year for our part-time employees, which is a wonderful thing, we value our employees, and we're happy to do, you know, as whole city is. We're happy to do what is needed to make their lives better, but that does affect our budgeting, of course. So to manage that labor to sales to eleven percent is a bit of a challenge. And in order to make that all work, we're gonna have to increase in gross profits to pay for that. Inventory management, you saw that wine sales went up slightly, so we were always working to refine that selection. The liquor inventory, that was up five point three percent in sales, so we wanna make sure that we're putting in some new unique items and appealing to customers in that category. And in the beer inventory, it's our goal to increase our gross profit there. Beer is fifty percent of our sales at any given time, and so our overall net profit depends very heavily on where we're priced and how that gross profit is falling. Part of that is making those changes to the cooler space, making sure that we have those most profitable items in the right positions. And that new this year, we're going to start tracking not just the number of transactions or customer counts in the store, but also the number of products that we have sold. Since the pandemic, our things did get skewed, you know, so our transactions are going down or staying flat, I should say, but they're they're not increasing as we would like to see them increase. So we wanna understand what's causing that, if we're selling more products to each customer, you know, that's part of our price per sale. So we know that that's going up, but we wanna know exactly how many products we're selling. I think it's a better indicator of what's happening than the transaction counts at this time. So we're gonna start tracking both customer counts and the number of products sold. Because those customer accounts have flattened, I have a couple of concerns moving forward. One is about our store location. It was big debate when we remodeled, expanded the store where we are now. At the time of that remodel, we did some a bunch, a lot of work to determine where the store should be and what our possible sales were moving forward. The goal at the time was to hit six million dollars. So staying downtown, we thought we could hit six million dollars by two thousand twenty-six, so in twenty years. Well, we're at seven point five million in eighteen years, so we've exceeded that goal, so that's great. But we also recognize that at that point, we were gonna start to see some flattening of our customer accounts and our sales. Mostly because we can we can attract all of those customers, and we have a great market area, and we can keep those customers coming to us, but we're not necessarily getting those occasional customers that you get just by the traffic going by you. So we wanna start thinking about that as we move forward. And also, we need to start thinking about legalized cannabis and what effect that's going to have on our sales. We just wanna be aware of those two things as issues as we move forward. Any questions? I can answer any concerns?
I think so, I think the the customer count thing is a reality, you know, when we have, if you're coming into town and you're building a business, the south end is where everything's going on, and that's something I think is a city council, and and we need, this is just me, but we need to really look at that because just the traffic count and the people we're not hitting that aren't aware of where it's at. It's more than I think we think that aren't taking advantage of the facility. And we're very aggressive on prices as far as a municipal, a lot of times you hear municipals are overpriced, are these cheapest total? No, but nobody is. We do need to make a profit, and customer count is one way to increase that.
You know, if you're in retail, you should always be considering your location. That's just pretty basic. Should be thinking about where you're located and how it's affecting your sales, so something to start to consider. And also that legalized cannabis question. You know, many states saw big decreases in their liquor sales when cannabis became legal, and there is an opportunity for the city to be the exclusive point of purchase for cannabis. I'm not advocating either way, but I think it's an important thing that we need to think about.
And I will just note to that, and that was actually something I was gonna bring up this this year as we start with our strategic planning. You know, Candace is right, it's, there's still a lot of questions when it comes to, you know, cities being in the municipal business, but we do have that option. And when you think about, you know, the approach we've taken in regards to liquor for safety and control purposes, you know, we're in that business and, you know, I'm not here to advocate one way or the other, but it's something I think we at least need to to think about and discuss if that's an avenue we wanna pursue in regards to the cannabis field as well. And then Candace, this is, I hope I'm not putting you in a tight spot, but, you know, we talked about location, is it, do you think there is a a need for a complete relocation or maybe even just adding a second store?
I would say adding a second store. I I really would not ever wanna see us leave downtown. I think that's an important, it's important to have a presence with the city business downtown. But I think we are missing some business on that south side, for sure.
And you're seeing communities outstate that are doing two locations, you know, I mean, it's happening more and more because territories switch, you know, popularity of businesses switch.
And I think, you know, as a city, as a council, we need to realize, and I think Candace has, obviously, there's a lot of people that come into this community that only areas they visit are Menards Target, Walmart, that sells side, and don't even come down here, and so I think we are potentially missing out on a customer base there, where they're maybe just coming in to shop, and so on.
Downtown location would satisfy those, of course, the cost is more, but I mean, I think you generate more sales.
Any other questions for Candace, thoughts?
Good report.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Candace. Moving on, we do not have any unfinished business under new business, first reading of ordinance number twenty-four dash eight four six. An ordinance authorizing sale of municipal-owned land to HDC Properties LLC.
Well, Mayor and Council, I I never thought that I'd be sitting here about two weeks or three weeks after we put our villains on the market saying that we've sold one of them, or at least we've signed a purchase agreement on one of them, and so we've officially signed a purchase agreement on the old police station and the adjacent parking lot for our asking price. And so with that, as a part of our city charter appellate, we need to have, we need to sell properties through an ordinance which requires two readings of it, and so this would be the the first reading of of that ordinance to officially, I guess, complete that transaction of the sale of the of that property.
Motion to approve first reading.
I will second that.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay, motion carries.
I gotta tell you, Matt, on your Friday updates, I'm reading my Friday update, and I was sitting next to you, and I think I said holy. This was quick.
Well, and and I'll say, I was surprised because the initial interest was in the EOC, and then when Matt, a realtor, called and said, I have a purchase agreement, that's what I was thinking of, to find out it was the police station, I was pleasantly surprised, so.
Good deal.
Moving on, governance, we have the Hutchinson Housing redevelopment authority board minutes of November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Chief Gipperston, you have anything for us?
Nothing today.
You must have gave a real good speech or pitch to sell that police station, right?
Do my best.
Candace, you have anything else for us? Kelly, you have anything for us?
The staff holiday party is on Friday night, so we're really excited about that, just a minute before. It's in the personnel hall, so you said that's a portion of, I believe, compensation for our staff, so looking forward to to being able to plan that and participate in that.
Where do we have the party?
It's at the event center.
There we go.
We're gonna utilize that space while we can. Last year, we did a B and B tournament, and then we're gonna do that again this year, it was successful, people had fun, so really looking forward to that.
Good times.
All right, sounds good. Mark, you have anything for us?
Nothing tonight.
Well, why don't we start with Tim? Tim, you got anything for us?
All's quiet.
All righty. Dave?
Well, I heard all the committees that I'm sitting on, so I will try and do a better effort at reporting on those committees. Like we'd say about the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission is, we just, executive board meeting last twenty-eighth of December, and there are people trying to get the loan in before the end of the year. I was called to rendezvous in Wilmer, and it's gonna be axe-throwing, mini golf, party room, that type of stuff that's going on over there.
They kinda helped to run out here. Axe-throwing.
So that's one of the things that happened, and they didn't go through the total board, and I don't know, many people don't know this, but the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission has twenty-six board members on it, executive board, which is consists of the secretary and the director and several other people that are interested in doing that part of it. I do sit as the secretary for the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission. Other than that, it's provided, one of the subcommittees I sit on for that is the Rural Transportation Committee, and so we work really hard with trying to get transportation in all areas of the Fort County area, which is McLeod, McLeod. I won't think of the one next over here, if for some reason it was set in my mind.
Who? Right, I know.
Thank you. Meeker in Redvale, and so it works with all those counties, works with, we're never a primary lender. Basically, what we try to do is fill the gaps with money that is appropriated by government agencies from state to feds, so. I think we have eight employees, and they work very hard, just like what our employees here do, searching and helping and that type of thing, work with SWIFT quite often to fill that, so. It's a, it's a part of the gamut that we don't see day in and day out. And when you got someone that doesn't say anything about it, well, then definitely the the opening is there, you know, a lot of things happen, and but I'll try and keep you more informed as that same way with the planning commission and the joint planning commission, joint planning commission is the townships. They're involved in the city of Hutchinson as well as the city, and that just goes to if there's things that are gonna affect the city, and I'm glad I sit on that because then we wanna know that, if it does, if it doesn't, then it's immaterial to that part of it. And the planning commission is up five, I believe it's five commissioners that watch out for the city with planning, what's coming across and that type of thing, and that comes out of our planning committee, our planning people here in the in this building, so our staff, I should say. So basically, there's a lot going on that goes on behind the scenes that sometimes we don't inform as well, because it comes up on comes up here for, if it's passed there, then it comes up here to an ordinance or a resolution, and basically it takes off from that, then two, two nights or two meetings to get that approved. So basically, I don't think about reporting on that, just as a basis, it comes up, it's only a consent agenda, and more than likely, it goes through the second part of it, and that's a consent, I think, agenda at that time. So it's things that aren't reported, but that are, they are recorded but not reported, so that's kind of the way I guess I'd put that, but. So that's uh kind of the way I guess I'd put that, but I'll see if I can't do a better job with that.
Yeah, see, Dave, just a quick question on the Mid-Minnesota Development. Are most of those elected officials that are sitting on that?
They're all appointed except for the director, who is uh an elected official, not elected only by the board.
True. But I mean, most of the board members, are they elected officials? I mean, obviously yourself is an elected official.
Only because there's two of us now, one from Wilmer is uh and Hutchinson. Is we represent cities over ten thousand population. So that's the reason that they have those two on there. Otherwise, if it wasn't for that, we have one for small cities, smaller cities than what Hutchinson is. They have some for the townships, county. Uh so school teachers, anything from school teachers to elected officials. I know the mayor of um Olivia sits on that commission. All have a specific part, it's just like here, where we take the individual jobs that we take to assist to with the, on the commissions. Uh they do the same thing there. So they all have anything from. Uh agent to transportation to what's going on in schools, what's going on in communities, what's uh. If you remember, I think it was the Pines got the uh, uh they call it a hack, uh two-wheel. Electric bike that seats two people in front and someone drives it from the back.
A rickshaw.
That was partially, that was partially uh funded by uh. I don't remember what organization it was now that uh helped fund that so that they could get that. So things like that that go around uh different areas and whatnot, so.
I appreciate you sharing that because I, I think from time to time I hear rumors that. Or stories about uh Mid-Minnesota Development is uh this, you know, huge agency that's controlling a lot of things in this area. That's just not.
Work with all of around, around the uh territory, so. Have very, I think it's probably a pretty important uh aspect of uh perspective of what goes on in the counties and what can be done, so.
Thanks.
All right, thanks, Dave.
Yep.
Matt?
All right, eating Matt and your advice, Gary. Doing updates, I, I'll just give a quick uh, the committees, one of the ones I'm on, public arts uh committee. And we've got three new members, one's right here from the leader, Janine, and then uh Chris Hague's a new member, Andrew Webster's a new member. Uh also on there is Patrick Hiltoner, Juana Lambert, Justin Beck and Lynn Newman from the. Um from the public, or from the. Parks and Rec. Yeah, and one of the things we do is the stroll, the uh, the.
Arch stroll?
Yes, and we're picking those, actually, we have a meeting tomorrow and we'll be starting to pick those for next year. And the other thing I'm on, bike pedestrian committee, uh we just had, we meet quarterly, we just had a meeting in December. One of the things they do was Gary, I know you've taken part of it and I've tried to, Chad, I'm pretty sure you have, but the bike to school in the fall and uh. And the spring, fall was down a little bit. The other thing that that committee has done is they were instrumental in getting, uh I believe it's twenty or twenty-five bikes. That um it's a three-county, they share them for the um, for the uh. Programs that each high school can use them, like Hotch, Litchfield, like oh, they can use these for kids for their physical education classes. So that's kind of a neat deal. Uh the other thing, wage committee and our bike committee, I'm gonna run these down quick, I'll try and do this quick. But uh uh on the bike, there's Tracy Markwart, uh Mark Caneman, Deb Card, Mike McDowell. Uh Eric Jensen, uh Brett Nelson, Lynn Newman, they're represented from the city, Mike Stifter, John Olson and myself. Uh and then E D A, I'm gonna let Chad talk about that because we're both on it, we're both council reps. Um but the wage committee I'm on, and that is uh reps from uh city workers, Lisa. Hergen Raider, am I saying that right? I did it, all right. Chris Hutton, uh there's Dan Yocum. Uh Tom Claus, Andy Reed, Kelly Wintland is leads that, was their H R, uh Dave Sebastian. And Matt's always there and myself, so interesting, you know, it comes, fall of the years when we really start getting kicking in on that for the new budgets. And uh I'm glad to be sitting on that, it's a nice thing. I think this year we came up with about a six percent wage increase, which. People hear that and they think, holy crap, six percent, but that's an average and it's very. The people that are getting that large raise, just to be clear with the, with our constituents, our loans are lower on the, on the pay scale. So I mean, it, it's all done proportionately and it's a good community to be on. I've missed the last two E D As, so you can fill them in. I just, my job has kinda gotten in the way of being at that meeting, so I'll turn it to Chad.
So I'm on the Park and Rec Board and that, we did not have a meeting in December, um so that was pretty quiet. Um last month, we talked a lot about the goats, that was the big, big thing, that all turned out great. So um E D A was pretty quiet, uh Miles takes the last week off of the month, so it was pretty quiet. But the only unfortunate thing, like the medical center site redevelopment is gonna change directions, the developer backed out. So for hopefully, Miles can find somebody else for that spot, so we're gonna re-advertise um for that. Um otherwise, E D A is pretty quiet about stuff. Um Miles has a bunch of stuff simmering, but it's not ready to be openly talked about. So, yep, so um otherwise, it's a pretty quiet month on my end.
Sounds good, Chad. Matt?
Um just two, two quick notes. One, uh union negotiations are on this Thursday night from, that's starting at seven. So just a reminder, I think, for Gary and Tim. Then obviously, city offices are closed next uh Monday with uh M O K holiday. And then I do wanna share, I appreciate the council member sharing this information because I think it's important for the public to know that first off. As Pat noted, there's several community members that are involved in a lot of decisions that come forth from these committees. And then also staff members, a lot, like I said, we always talk about, a lot of times, this is the end product that ends up here. But people don't realize the work that's been going on through these committees, commissions, which include a lot of participation from the community in those. Committees. And yeah, and we do have all those committees listed on our website, along with the people that are a part of those too, if everyone, anyone ever has an interest in. Looking at that, so otherwise, that's it for me.
Along with that, Matt, uh if anybody's interested in, in serving on some of these committees, they just have to stop down here and get a interest form.
Yep, and sometimes we have openings and sometimes we don't.
So if you. Keep it in and they get them to me and, you know, when there's an opening, we surely like people to serve on them. So um and I'm on the H R A board, at which we meet the third Tuesday. So we haven't had a meeting yet this month and on the airport commission, which will be the third Thursday. So I'll give you my updates on my committees next time. Uh the only thing, I know there's not much snow out there, but me being the old fireman, you know. So when we get closer, uh please adopt a fire hydrant, keep it clear.
Cleaned mine yesterday.
Yeah, see, right, good job. Uh the other thing, uh first of the year. Uh dog license, if your dog is spayed or neutered, um just go to the police station, bring the. Um record, right? Record, uh Tom, maybe you can touch on it a little more than I can, please. I knew I'd get you up here. And that, it's for cats too, correct?
Yeah, um actually pet license, um so it's pretty much any pet that you, I mean, if you have a rabbit, you're supposed to have a license. By ordinance, but um yeah, so if you, if your pet is spayed or neutered or if it's microchipped. Um the council in the past has agreed to waive the fee. Uh if that's not the case, uh it is a ten dollar fee for the license. Um uh the other, they just need to bring those records down. In the past, we really haven't been asking for. The immunization records for your pet, but it, we've started doing that now, so there is a little confusion with the public. They are coming down, get their license and don't have the proper documents, but, so it's just a reminder, rabies vaccination and all the other.
And then actually, it's pretty cheap insurance because if your dog or cat does get out and gets picked up. Instead of going to the vet and having the, I can't remember, Tom, what is it, a hundred, hundred and some dollars, right?
Uh you're in it for at least a hundred bucks. Um it's probably closer to that one fifty by the time you pick your, your pet up. Um so yeah, you're right, especially if it's free, it's really cheap. Cheap insurance. Um if, if your animal's licensed, we have a way of tracking who the owner is. And we can just deliver the animal to your home rather than you having to pick it up from the pound.
Yeah, well, uh you know, Lola got, followed me, I was gonna leave and took off. And of course, she was outside and she followed me, ended up in a squad car and they brought her back. So yes, it's uh, you know, and I was surprised, I just got my, you know, because I was gone for a while. I just got my license yesterday and I was number ninety-five.
Yeah, uh well, we usually start selling new licenses.
Yeah.
November.
It's good, you know.
Yeah, and we usually sell four or five hundred of them in a year.
There you, thank you.
Yep.
So that's all I had then.
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Full say nay. Motion carries.